The emails we have.
All right, what do you look for?
We're eighty-four through Microsoft suite, which we have at the courthouse on the courthouse surge. I think CAS over at the sheriff's department are forty. Per email.
How many employees and staff you have right now CAS?
I would need twelve right now.
Twelve with forty dollars a piece? Per year, per year. Four eight.
Which wouldn't be much compared to a lot of the private thing.
Right.
I think a transfer wouldn't necessary.
Is there any way you can find it in your budgets that does that kind of cheap?
I can try.
Move some stuff around if you need to.
Try.
I'd probably appreciate that. Doug, how many do you have?
Forty-two.
Huh?
Forty-two.
Forty-two. Please just another. Five for you?
No, that's down.
Thirty-four hundred.
Oh yeah, that's right.
Thirty-five hundred twenty-eight. You know, it seems to go, it's cheaper to do this than do something else.
Wish we had this information before we did our hood. You had a question?
I did. What about? People in the courthouse or anybody receiving emails from Gmail? I send you, I send you.
Well, that's what I was referring to.
Right.
And sometimes I attach documents.
It'll get filtered through. It goes through our current firewall. But there are some viruses out there that will get through. What I would do, I was the auditor and you were sending one and you had an attachment. I would call you and say, hey, you sent me an attachment.
Oh.
Which, I will say that Rainy did put in a new firewall last week. And then waiting on this other firewall. So our old firewall is here. You have a new firewall. And then new fire items in what that judge.
I think we're limiting that.
Not. If somebody gets through that firewall, then our eye.
Doug, is there anything you can do in your budget wise to move anything?
I'd have to look and see if I'm at.
I don't imagine a lot.
Actually, that's one of the commissioners' budgets, so.
Right.
That we did that.
We'll have to do that for a moment.
All right. You guys withdraw your motion?
Yeah.
Okay. I have one thing to request.
Yes.
During the time when we had jury selection last time. Everything all parked up down here, all parked up in Canyon. I noticed from two or three people left. If we could move that big truck down there, there'd certainly be several more parking places in the county.
No, I have a place.
It's kind of stuck in the back of the.
It's all grass that's sinking. I'll move it and I'll sink it.
What if we put it on the very end? Long way. On the south side of the lot.
Now, the guy that lives in the house up in the east end, by Park of Longways, he won't be able to do it.
Well, it's County Parkin. It's a County Parkin. Like, you can move down a couple if you needed to. I mean, they cost us money already and we're ready to clean up their garage and stuff. Get rid of our, our lot and get rid of it.
I'd appreciate it if you could.
I'll find us something.
Have you guys given any more thought to handle?
I have, I don't know. I don't know if county council alone has used this. Yet money to purchase that or not. Um, either that or we're gonna spend a hundred and fifty thousand or more maybe for a new coroner building. To get erected up, because we need to get her a place. And right now she has one where, and I think instead of like state code, we have to have her an office or a building. From Florida.
There's an Indiana code that you have. The county coroner is supposed to have a climate controlled. Gun.
Right, I, I thought I read that somewhere.
Hey, thank you.
Thanks for all the good news, Mike.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Yeah.
County Highway Engineer Paul Coates. Good morning, Paul.
Good morning.
Hey, did you happen to bring that, the title over for me?
Did not.
I'll stop over. I dropped over Friday, but I missed you.
Well, you talk to Kelly, she knows what's going on.
Okay.
She handles all that.
Thanks.
Want to kind of bring you up to date on a little bit of change in direction in terms of our traffic count stations that we've been using. If you remember, we're, we go on a three-year cycle. So this year will be two thousand and twenty, which would be the same locations that we used back in seventeen. And the idea is to kind of cross-check those and see where we're at with it. For the most part, when we've been doing these rechecks or redo's three years later. Had been too many fluctuations. There're just a few locations where things have even changed a little bit. So, working with the Tipton County Carriage Plan Commission, who does our transportation planning for us. We came up with a thought, the idea, okay. What if we go look at CFOs and CAOs and get the locations of them? And then let's see what roads feed those facilities. In other words, they've always gotta have feed in and out of there. They've gotta have little piggies come in, big piggies go out. Okay, and those definitely affect the quality of our roads. And so, if you look down in the lower right-hand corner, they have varying sizes of squares, blue squares that they use to indicate the number of facilities and the size of the facility. There are, according to what they could find from the records of the state, there's a hundred and six facilities total in Carroll County. Now, the bigger the square, the bigger the facility. And you can see in terms of the size of the animals that they produce, if you want to call it that, on a regular basis. And so, look at these. What we've done is tried to take it and relocate with the little gold Xs where the projected stations for this year would be. Trying to find locations where we could measure the traffic count, but also within those traffic counts, determine how many of them are semis that typically bring the feed and also haul the pigs. And so, what we're trying to do is look at those roads, which are most heavily affected by these CAOs and CFOs. And so, I think it's kind of unique and I'm really excited because it gives us something to look at. And you can see particularly down in the southeastern part of the county. There's a lot of these operations that are there that definitely affect the roads. And so, you know, and if you have any input or thoughts on where we might want to put these. We're aiming for March the fifteenth to finalize our, our count location. So if you have some input or some thoughts on this, it would be nice to welcome them. We cannot put counters on gravel roads. It's gotta be a chicken seal road. But I, I think it's kind of a, a unique situation. It allows us an opportunity to kind of see just how much these guys are affecting our roads and try to measure a little bit better how much traffic is coming in and out because of them. But it's a pretty neat situation. I, I was kind of excited to get something like this and be able to look it over and to see. I mean, I, I knew we had a lot of them out there. I, I had heard over a hundred, but I wasn't sure where they were all. And it would take me a month or something to begin to put this together.
We were putting out sixty-one counters.
Yeah, now, so typically, well, that's sixty-one. I think we have been doing like sixty a year and I think we're up now to sixty-five or sixty-six, which we're allowed as part of our contract, county contract.
Well, I'm looking at this map, five hundred north where I used to live, there's there's a new CAO that came in out there. I think it's five hundred north. Probably four hundred west, maybe. Goes into Rockville tobacco way.
Okay.
Then they got what I used to know as the Addus down the road. There's five. There's five on that road, CAO building.
And that's probably, is that number seventy?
Uh.
Because it would be in that big that it is with the crossing, that that would be a very large facility.
Now, it'd be five hundred north, so just outside of Camden off of seventy-five goes across to the Heartland.
Oh, okay.
Where they did the, because there's not only truck traffic, but there's a lot more vehicle traffic. Because it's misty, you can just go up there and come right into Camden. And there's a lot of extra traffic on seventy-five now since it's been extended.
That's, that's one of the key ones that we've been seeing traffic increase on on a regular basis.
So I don't know, maybe you might want to move one up to that area.
Okay.
I, I know there'd be added with the new CAO there. Depending on which direction they come from.
And that's, and that's one of the things that we're trying to figure out is, you know, to me is, okay. If you look at some of these, what's the best way out? Are they using that best way? Well, if you try to improve the road and make it so they take the most correct route.
Well, and that gravel road too continues a lot by the big trucks to go to that one CAO at the dead end of four hundred west. Yeah, it'd be four hundred west. So that'll be about three fifty. Because ever since you replaced that bridge with the two culverts. Is that traffic really went up on that? But it's what made the withstand of that, right? The two culverts.
Yeah. Yeah, that's fine here. Being a little wider probably helps too.
Yeah.
Anything else? I have one other item for you if I could. I have an employee who is admitting a request. He, I'll call one of those employees that took a little short traffic agreement on the other side of the fence. He was hired back in, in May of two thousand and eighteen. Designed last November two thousand and nineteen. Was gone forty days and since has come back. So he was, been here just a little short of eighteen months. Took off forty days and I hired him back since then. He's a good worker, has a CDL. Now, he's asking permission from the commissioner to see if you would approve him. To, again, not approve it, allow him to participate in the HSA account situation. Where he's got health monitoring, plus he gets a thousand dollars extra for that. I, I would like to recommend that he be allowed to do that. Sometimes some things don't always work out when you jump the fence a little bit. But he is a good worker. He was here for eighteen months and he's come back to work for us again. And my understanding is that it, you have to be here six months before you disobey him, according to the rules. So I, I make a recommendation that you approve that. But once again, it's something that I need to have your action on, if you think that's an appropriate thing to do.
Was he in the program before?
Yes.
If you do that, probably can't work.
We got water wars.
I know. Been doing vicious, but.
I'd drive it smart, so.
Yeah, but if we start doing that, then everybody's gonna try to sample grass on the other side of the fence and want to come back. We're gonna do the same for everybody?
Hopefully, we have a sample grass stayed with the dairy.
Yeah. So that makes it a change in. Of course, if you, emergency standard break, you still apply for our insurance since he's a new employee again?
We have to re-enroll.
Re-enroll.
If nothing is done, he would lose the five hundred dollars, so he'd have the second five hundred dollars if he had.
That's what I wondered, you know, if he'll be able to prove.
I mean, it's not gonna lose the whole amount.
If we don't lose. But if we. But if we do, he'll get the full.
Yes. If he finishes his requirements.
I think that Paul says that he has good employees that he wants to keep.
That's what I was wondering, yeah.
That weighs heavily. Good employees are worth a lot, so.
And they're not, they're not easy to find and not easy to keep, to be honest with you.
I'll, I'll make that mention.
I'll second all the favors, please say aye.
All right. Thank you very much.
Hey, on a bad note, I got called outside and he gave a look at a rug.
You did?
Yeah.
Was it a bad rug?
Yeah, I mean, it was more of a stone plowing issue. It got a little too far over into the yard and just throwing it everywhere. The way I looked at it was, you know, right on the edge, the rug got the bubble on the top, what you call the crown. I think the blade just went like that and I mean it threw chunks of everything. I told him I'd say something to you. So there on three fifty north where it comes three hundred turns into comes from the backside of Anderson, there in five twenty-five west.
Three fifty north and west?
Five twenty-five west, I think it is, or five seventy-five west. I called the Paddle Road off two eighteen. I told him I'd bring my long switch road there and help you plan it out, but he just didn't want it to happen again. I'm like, well, you gotta understand with the snowplow guy, I think I made him happy, but I think they left a message on your voicemail too.
That, that's fine. I, I mean, sometimes it just happens. I mean, if you get over that berm, that doggone berm.
Pull you.
Yeah, grabbed your plow.
And I explained that to her. I said, if you never plowed before, I said, I'll let you ride with one of the drivers for an hour or two. And she understood, but she just asked if we can try not to get so close.
Okay, all right, well, I'll, I'll look into it a little bit more.
Okay.
We'll talk to the driver, but he's, he's one of our younger drivers.
Okay. And by the way, we had a driver that actually my wife was stranded at a gas station and he made sure that, he didn't know she was my wife at the time, but made sure she was okay in that cold weather, so. Mister Alderman did a fantastic job that day.
All right, I appreciate that. I'll pass that along to him.
Yeah, I think he did a very good job of getting out, getting salt down and setting down. I, just, my, my district governor, I think, very well covered. Appreciate it very much.
Well, I think Bob Lower, who's been with us like thirty-six years now. He was a little skeptical when I talked to him about pre-wetting, what's going on. He has sold now. He, he's a firm believer in that. He said, you know, he'd always be going around trying to hit the hills before the snow gets here. And he said, hey, there's no question that the pre-wetting material sticks better, has a lower freezing temperature. And he said it's been, been very effective in terms of what they're at. He is group Goldberging and working on getting his little one-ton fixed up, so he has pre-wet on his truck too.
I would ask you, Doug, that I, this reminder coming. On the, what to me is the south side of Adams Mill Covered Bridge. I remember it doesn't sound straight a little bit. The side towards Mill. It seemed like that the north side had the approaches to the bridge very well covered. The south side did not. And I don't know, when I went through there, I was just a little concerned that it was kind of icy for that bridge. I don't want somebody sliding into the bridge and it'll cover the bridge. I don't know if it is, if you can get a big truck down in there or not, or a sand truck.
It'd have to, it'd have to be part of one of our smaller guys. And part of the problem is too, when you look at on the south side, you don't think of it being a hill there. And I know what you're talking about. You come down there and you gotta kind of curve in to get into the bridge. So if there's a little ice there, it could be a bad situation there. I'll talk to the guys and see what's going on. Probably right now, we don't go down there and do much of anything other than plow. We probably don't put a lot of material there.
Thank you. Treasurer, Kenwinder Ross, Senator.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I guess first I'd like to shoot, once we've had a chance to review the information that I gave you at last meeting, if you have any questions.
And this is a new one, because you're filling up three hours.
The keen form is the most current version.
I see you added something to it from the last.
Please rank one through six of our employees to your family. I think that's. Yeah.
I don't think I doubted anything since I presented it at your last meeting.
You added, let's see what this say here? Do you feel that Carroll County planes are under?
That was, that was on the one I gave you a class fee. I think it's probably that the very first one. Oh, I didn't give it. Oh, okay. I don't think I gave it to you before the last meeting.
Oh, I'm waiting next one. I thought this was the first one you gave.
I, I'm not, who'd you get that from? They got it from me, because I passed it. Yes, oh, okay. And you brought in, you went to the meeting.
I'm good with the survey, I'll put that bottom thing. I'd like to know the other inputs on how we rank with our insurance with our employees. Put that bottom one on the. Push your own.
Which one, you're talking about the, that last?
Yeah, the last two.
You, you do not want to know how the employees feel about their HR and the results you give.
Well, to me, my personal opinion feels like we're vashing in our office, because I don't want to do that.
Okay. So I imagine it'd be good if you had a motion on this to allow this to go out with that one exception?
Yes, that would be a motion.
Okay. So he has a motion to allow the distribution of this survey to all, are you going to these courthouse employees or all employees?
I'd like to get it to all employees. So I'd like to send it to our regular emailers and ask the, the department heads to just.
Turn them out?
Print them out and make sure that all of them. I mean, it'll be up to the department heads to make sure that the employees.
Yeah, that's reasonable, Joe. With the exception of, do you want to leave out that last question?
That's fine.
And I'll second that. So all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All right.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
It'll be interesting what we get back.
Yeah, hopefully, um, within the next four weeks, so. You get a significant return.
I was gonna say, do you have a date that you want these back, Mommy? I just, I.
It'll probably take a while since we got routine shifts and stuff like that.
Well, I, I figured I'd put, give them the month of March and then come back in April. That's still gonna give you plenty of time to review the result before you have to.
Right, yeah. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
And we're down to Council President Josh Plume, who we've been forgetting, we're kind of five minutes behind.
He had to leave, so that's why he gave us this, and we already went through that.
Yeah, we already went through it. What this item here, twenty-twenty edit recommendations, has to do with what that we discussed with our representative from Burlington back here of, that, that they did not pass the edit as it was and made a recommendation that we change two items. And so, we're gonna have to sit down and have a word there and go through it.
Bob ran into the Chamber of Commerce lady at one point for this. She canceled all of her advertisements so far for the year. Does it have, does it need to get their bill paid? So she had to cancel early on there?
So all of our advertising will not be in this year.
And I'm on my thing. Or they probably could leave the whole forty-five thousand in there.
Okay. A lot of, for, for the benefit of you who are here, who I very much appreciate you being here. The Chamber of Commerce, we supported with forty-five thousand dollars, which uses that mostly for almost all of it, is, we did advertisement in magazines and things like that for events in Carroll County, though we're supporting the festivals.
I think thirty thousand was for advertisement, fifteen was to help the office.
Right. So, I guess this year we'll, we'll have a test to find out if it does any good or not for that advertising, because it doesn't seem like the cousin of council slowed this up, that they're gonna get their money and they're gonna be able to advertise. Let's start all over on that.
You could approve the ones that have done, according to their recommendations, and come back and amend the capital improvement plan. The one.
Does that fit with the state's, the way that the state has set it up, that it's either all or none?
That's my understanding of it.
Don't think it's all or none. I mean, look. I can approve.
You notice that, and you always can check that.
You can amend the capital improvement.
We can, we can amend it, but they have to either approve it in entirety or not.
Well.
Line item.
The capital improvement plan is the motion of the executive. That doesn't get, that doesn't super, that doesn't get around, circumvent the council's role in appropriating funds. But the funds still have to be appropriated. The councils does not have to approve the capital improvement plan in total. As long as they, as long as they, as long as they appropriate the funds, then, then the end of these that the approved funds going to, they're filed claims and they can get paid. So it's not, it's not all or nothing. It's, I mean, the council can say we won't, did they say that they won't appropriate any?
I think everybody is set down there enough, so I can't believe it's either all or none.
Right, and I, I think what we present, what we redo here in twenty-twenty edit claim to them. And they agree with all of it, so they can approve it.
They'll still appropriate that.
And they'll appropriate that money. And then, later on, like you did with the gazebo, you had, and amended for twenty-twenty or nineteen, twenty-nineteen, whatever it was.
Twenty-eighteen for twenty-nineteen?
Yes, and then they have to approve it. If you had two on there, is what I was told. If you have two and they didn't want to do one, then both of them will be checked.
Because I was worried about the contract we signed with EDC, because this was to have a payment done, right?
It was signed for approval of the council.
Okay.
Applications.
Well, I didn't want to get sued because we didn't get it appropriated.
That's why I made that.
Okay. So we can recommend that they take the top three, the forty-five, one thirty-six, five, and the three? Ask them to appropriate that?
Your capital improvement plan is in effect right now for, for all of them that you approved. They've indicated, I don't know.
Two of them they didn't want.
Two that they did not want. I don't, and it's not to appropriate the funds for the ones that they approved.
It just says recommended.
Right, they had a different, they just did a recommendation.
Right.
So maybe you need to contact their attorney to get them.
So. They're gonna be doing, they're gonna be, you're gonna be doing an additional preparation for all of us, right? Because they want, those monies haven't been appropriated.
We advertise and we might not approve any of them right now. We advertised and they have not approved any of them right now, actually.
Okay.
So, they meet this Thursday.
Okay, I'll talk to you there. But I don't, I don't think it's an all or nothing, I mean, I think they uh, I think they, they had the right to withhold appropriation of anything that you need to prove.
Right.
They don't, I don't think they have to make it an all or nothing. I mean, uh, I mean, you could, you could say that now, you still want the original plan. Unless you wanna indicate what you wanna do now, then you definitely, you're not prepared to do that without Lawrence.
I think I might have Lawrence in it.
Yeah, okay, so I'll get with Eric. So uh, if they're, they're planning this in effect, so if the council. I'll, I'll talk to Eric. I don't think it's an all or none.
Cause I don't know what the, the people understand, though, maybe you know, that the two forty we do to the highway, that's just for materials. And last year we had a truck actually burn up. And he was allowed to use that money to get us another truck and get us back up on the road. And uh, I think it might hurt the highway if we don't keep that in there, in my opinion, cause they cut his budget seven hundred thousand and they gave him what, two hundred back?
Yeah.
So we lost almost a million dollars just almost right there with this and the, the cuts they did for budgets. So that's a lot of money right off the top.
Right now, the way it sits, the council has cut nine hundred and forty thousand dollars out of the highway budget for this year. Yes.
How much is the total budget for highway?
Uh, I can't really tell you that, cause there's so many different budgets for the highway that there's.
Right, they say there's a surplus in there, but you know, we got a bridge in Paramount that's gonna need replaced soon. That's gonna be a lot.
I didn't know if that was twenty-five percent of budget, thirty percent half the budget.
Right.
It's most of the budget for this year for spending. And we're, we try to not uh, spend more than we have coming in. You know, um, not get into reserves, we don't have to.
I know when I sit down with council, we always gave this money and hope he didn't have to use it. And kinda like a, an extra layer that we have if we needed it, if we had a bad situation in accounting with our road.
And Paul seems to spend the money pretty well, from what I see from being here. Does a good job with their money.
Yeah, he doesn't, he doesn't waste it.
Right.
A, a major part of this was to be used for uh, we have applied for a grant for the last four years. It's at least four, maybe five. The uh, state has come up with a grant system that we never had before. That uh, Paul stood together a, a lot of a packet about that fit, supporting our grant on information. And if we get that, now he has to identify certain roads it's gonna be used for and how it's gonna be used and what good it'll do for the community. If we get that grant, we put up two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, we put up three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, they put up a million. If we get that grant. So that three hundred and thirty-three thousand suddenly becomes a million three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. So it hurts to get this two forty cut out, because we may not be able to put up our part of that three hundred and thirty-three thousand, which will mean we won't get the million. Which is very hurtful to our highway department. Some of the information that has come out of the council has been a little indirect, because they keep saying all the millions that we have in the highway department. But they're including in that, like a four million dollars that we have back for bridge funds. And those bridge funds cannot be used for highway. They can only be used for bridges. So you can't say we got all these millions in highway when they're not in highway, they're in bridge funds. It's a different, it's funded differently, it's paid for differently, and it's, it's a different account. Um, as I tried to tell the council that we can pave with, we can fix roads for bridge approaches out of that. If we replace a bridge or a culvert. A culvert is any bridge that's less than twenty feet. A bridge is any structure that's longer than twenty feet by state definition. We can pave a hundred and fifty feet each way from a culvert or bridge replacement out of the bridge funds. But we can do the approaches. We can't take that money and do a mile road out here. So that money is not part of hi, part of our regular highway road money. And we, 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 it's, it is a mistake to say we have that much money back for roads when we don't. Now, we do have some, we do have some saved back and we will have to be, we'll have to be dipping into that savings.
But Paul said it's gonna be like three hundred thousand, sort of, they kept the budget the way they want?
Right. Yeah, yeah. So we just, I'm gonna have to sit down and call and work through it and see what we can do and what we can. We'll probably be discussing that at the next meeting, at the same time, we can come up with a budget um, here for our, our edit budget. And I think that's enough that we need to go into on that. Uh, we have other commissioner actions down here in twenty twenty, commissioner certificate sale? Jess?
I put that back on the agenda, cause I thought we had tabled it.
We did, I thought we did.
I thought we did.
But cause you said there was some properties that might have been taken off and it's paid and you wasn't a hundred percent sure, is that my understanding?
I suppose you guys didn't go past your properties, you didn't have to inspect them?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And I guess somebody had read that we back, we said that they decided not to do it, so either way is fine.
I think we should not do it this year, I don't think we have enough to do a commissioner certificate sale.
Right. Some of them are resold, what, once or twice?
Or four times?
Right, and it's not that much, I, I think we spend more time to sell it than we would if we just did.
On these particular ones, there are certain ones that, yeah, it's good to have them there.
We have about four properties or so that property tax has not been paid for a long time. And so those come up continuously. Now, it used to be that uh, we could only sell them for the amount of the property tax. Well, as the property tax kept accruing on these properties, nobody's ever gonna buy them. So the state came back to us and they gave us, gave everybody in Indiana commissioners the opportunity to sell it as a certificate sale at a lesser amount than the taxes. But the four properties or so that we have that are ones that have not, we, we just keep having them. Or not really property, I mean, they're, they're not properties that are used, they're landlocked, they're not uh.
Well, for instance, this one was, this parcel was sold in two thousand nine and was then on tax sale in two thousand fourteen, commissioner. And then they had needed it into their name and it was sold again in two thousand fifteen. And now it's back on tax sale, and now it's back, fifty back on the certificate sale. So it's just a lot of advertising for none. And then we wipe out those taxes if it's needed. So then we don't, can't collect them on the next tax sale if somebody um, did try to buy it. So there, it was just a, not a lot on these particular properties.
There's always a difference too between looking at the map and seeing a piece of property and going out and actually looking at the property. I know when we were looking for it. We were looking for a place to put something on out here.
Um, the Men's Home or something?
The what?
The Men's Home or, but someone came in and asked if we had any properties for.
Well, before that, there was something that we needed some property for. And I went along looking at all the properties that are left from building through your Hartland Highway out here. Most of them, there isn't a level foot on them, I mean, it's just little hillsides and pieces that, there's nothing left there. It's not, yes.
Did you contact and join any property owners and see if they'd be interested in?
Yeah, a lot of times they're contacting me, they know about it, but they.
That's part of the procedure of decisions.
Yeah, probably a property that takes more than cleanup and what it's worth.
Either that or they know nobody else is ever gonna buy it, so why do I need to buy it and pay property tax on it when it's gonna sit there anyway? So, so let's uh, you need a motion on that? To not, to not have a certificate sale?
No, yeah, I'll make a motion and maybe next year.
Sure. I'll second it, all in favor of no certificate sale, say aye. Ordinance twenty twenty dash oh one establishing a fee for emergency medical technician reports.
You can do a second, second reading and then you can tell you what for adopt.
All right, Beth, you wanna do a reading?
Um, ordinance two thousand twenty dash oh one, this is the board of commissioners of Carroll County and their lead thirty-one point oh four of the Carroll County Code to establish a fee for emergency medical technician reports.
This is what we've done before too, I would say.
Okay, so now Ted, how do we know about it? I'm a simple voice, so, okay? Yes, it is.
And you came up with these, didn't you?
Yeah, yeah, we just went by the Indiana State Code, it allows us to charge for, commit copies of those reports. Most of, most of the time those are, we get it requests from lawyers offices.
Okay, so like twenty dollars included the first ten pages?
Yeah.
Fifty cents per page for eleven through fifty, twenty-five pages for over fifty. Additional cost of mailing is ten dollars, requested to be filled within two working days. Twenty dollar charges may be waived or reduced for treating providers of the patient for hardship. Uh, motion, pass ordinance twenty twenty oh one.
Now I'll second it, all in favor of passing this ordinance twenty twenty dash oh one, please say aye.
Aye.
There's one. Probably need to do another, is there one over there on Lawrence?
I got one.
Okay.
Okay, and we are down to ordinance twenty twenty dash oh two. Prohibiting material support or resources for the enforcement of federal acts regarding firearms, firearm accessory, accessories and ammunition. We have an ordinance before us here. Uh, I think you gentlemen are here for that, aren't you? Would one of you like to be spokesman? Go right to the podium there, please. We appreciate you coming in for it.
Is your name, Mr. Brown? Douglas Brown.
Cousin, right?
Uh.
You're, you're my cousin, right?
Yeah, so. We're one of my teachers.
Go ahead.
Um, I'd like to thank the board for supporting the second amendment and the second amendment sanctuary movement. Um, it's important for Carroll County to align with the other counties across the country, send a message to D C that, you know, people won't tolerate the overreach anymore. Um, Virginia's getting really bad right now. Um, I mean, honestly, it's, it's looking like it's fixing Fernando Potter Cage and getting real serious. However, this resolution doesn't address the key issue that the second sanctuary, our second amendment sanctuary movement began with, which is state trampling on the second amendment rights. Um, it's great that the federal government wants to come in and do something, but there's nothing in this ordinance that protects us from the state. If they decide, you know, if we, that they're gonna take and do something, start compensating weapons or anything, there's nothing in here to protect us from our own state, just the federal government. We as uh, we as citizens of Carroll County feel it's imperative that the commissioner pass the best resolution possible. Dec dust, dec Jew. What we're asking is, is that you guys take the time to meet with some of the best minds in Indiana nationally. Uh, craft language that will be meaningful and pass the test of time. Um, gentleman like Guy Relford, he's actually been, been involved in a lot of the writing, the second amendment stuff for our state legislature. Um, on February twenty ninth of this month, the movement will be having a meeting. Um, it's uh, gonna be a public forum to discuss this. We're hoping to have uh, Mr. Relford there. Um, we're hoping uh, our sheriff will have time to be able to come and speak. We wanna take and get more of the input from the people in our county on both of this resolution and the one that we're hoping to put forward as well. Um, they might even decide at this meeting that we wanna change the wording of what we'd like as well, after talking with Mr. Relford. I mean, what you guys have got so far, I mean, looks at it, what is there is good. It's just that it doesn't go far enough.
And you say this meeting is February twenty?
February twenty ninth, uh, it's open to the public.
Two P, two P M.
Two P M.
Where?
Um, V F W, is that correct?
Yeah.
V F W?
Two o'clock.
Yes, sir.
So Ted, can we do this ordinance to protect us from the federal and have it done with the state?
To receive any uh, suggestions or approval if there are any. So, I mean, we can uh, easily insert state or federal in, in the existing ordinance, but if there's something better out there. I reached out, I'm a life patron member of the N R A, and I consider myself an activist. Uh, and I don't bring that rule in here, I don't bring my personal, I'm here to, to, to change policy. But I reached out to the N R A, I am like, and I really didn't get anything any better than what I thought. So, but if there's an expert out there that's got suggestions on how we can make this better, I can. Uh, the, the legislature in twenty eleven, uh, pretty much uh, preempted any local, uh, any new local regulations regarding uh, weapons. And you're probably familiar with that, the two thousand eleven uh, uh, legislature, Indiana legislature did. So uh, but there's nothing that prevents uh, local jurisdiction from uh, controlling its own resources. And that's what, uh, the ones that I've reviewed are all about controlling resources of the local government and enforcing anything that's in infringement on the second amendment right. And the Indiana constitution has its own provision, so. But if there's something else that we can put in this, I, I would recommend that you table it. And if there's something else that comes out of this uh, meeting, I'll be glad to, the board may not uh, take another look at. If they have, if they have, if they have a, if you have a, something else that you can immediately suggest is, you say that you're waiting to see what you might be able to improve with what others, other jurisdictions have done in Indiana?
Yes, um, we're hoping to have Mr. Relford at our meeting on the twenty ninth, we're waiting to hear back from him. Um, like I said, he's been key in writing some of our legislation in the state that is pro second amendment. Currently with, you know, with the, the ordinance that you have for you, uh, the current resolution would not prevent federal authorities from enforcing the current or future laws.
Well, we can't regulate federal authorities.
Exactly, we understand that. But what, what we're saying is, if, if I'm understanding it correctly, is, say for instance, all right, we passed this in Carroll County, um, and they, everybody thinks, okay, well good. Well, then they're thinking that the federal government can't enforce anything. Machine guns for everybody, to start building. That's not what we're trying to do, we're just trying to protect our rights. We understand that there are certain laws that are already on the books that are, they're protecting.